Good evening. I'd like to invite and welcome everyone to this October 28th meeting of the Patton Township Board of Supervisors. We are waiting for one of our supervisors who's had some technical difficulties. I'd like to start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance. Those who can, please stand and join me. My pledge of allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one. We will proceed next to public comments. And I have to apologize, it sounds like I have a cold, but I don't actually. Is there anybody in the television audience, in the cyber audience, who has a comment to make before the board? A comment that is not already on the agenda. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on to our section of presentations and public hearings. And the first item under that is a presentation by a team of Penn State students. They are currently in the Community and Economic Development Class 475. It's an upper level class. They are doing a study on open space use in Patton Township. Patton Township has one large, very notable space, the Haw family tract, and two other small open space parcels, which I didn't write down, and I can't remember. They're not as notable as the Haw tract. The three students I've had the great pleasure of working with over the last several weeks are Jillian Warner, Ben Osterling, and Bryson Hunter. And I'd like to add a little note about each of them. They are all, three of them, interested in open space, but have a slightly different connection perhaps with open space. Jillian has a very strong interest in animals. Ben Osterling in recreation, and Bryson Hunter in plants. So I think they make the perfect team to tackle this project. And I will actually turn it over to them, I believe. Is it Ben has, or Bryson is giving the opening remarks on this?
So hi, hello everybody. Thank you, Betsy, for your introduction. I'm Bryson Hunter. First, we'd like to thank you guys, the Patton Township Board, for inviting myself and my partners Jillian and Ben to this meeting to discuss our plans for working with open spaces in this township. We are all students studying the community environment development major, with our respective specializations within the, with our respective specializations in the major like Betsy alluded to. This major is a multi-disciplinary major, for those that don't know what C is. It is a major that encourages students to pair their passions with their work that they choose to do in communities after their schooling, or in other varied levels of occupation. So within this major, we spent the last few years figuring it, facilitating and learning about survey methods through various means and mediums as well. Myself and look forward to applying this knowledge. We've gained to work with each other as partners, along with leaders in Patton Township, like yourselves, to provide a survey to the Patton residents aimed to gauge the awareness and use of the open spaces within this township.
All right. I hope everybody can see my screen. I'm Jillian. As you can see in our cover letter that is provided here, at the beginning of our survey, our team has partnered with Patton Township to survey the residents on their knowledge of the Haw Family Preserve, the Gray's Woods Preserve, and the Marjory Seward Open Space. This survey will also identify desired current and future uses of these spaces. At the end of this project, we will present our findings and analysis to the Patton Township Board of Supervisors, and we are confident that this information will be able to provide all of the board members guidance as you look forward to managing these spaces.
Thanks, Jillian. So in terms of our survey, we decided to go with an online survey to ensure this project would need to be concluded, or so it would need to be adjusted for a budget. And in addition, considering the pandemic and the postal service, we concluded that it would be more efficient with the time and our resources that an online format would best suit this project. The survey is going to be formatted on the survey platform, Survey Monkey. It will be marketed and distributed through the Patton Township email list serve, website, Facebook group, and the Nextdoor app. Furthermore, we didn't feel the need to do a random sample for the survey, because we are looking for a general overview of knowledge on the open spaces. The survey will go out on November, after, we'll send a reminder email on November 8th to try and reach people that haven't seen it yet. Then we will send, then we will end the survey on November 16th, leading to about two weeks allocated for residents to respond. And so in terms of our questions, the basis of our questions are to gather a better understanding for residents' awareness of open spaces in Patton Township. That is why you'll see the inclusion of the Gray's Woods Preserve and the Marjory Seward Open Space, along with the Haw Family Preserve. We are aware that those two open spaces in particular are still being prepared and managed for open space use. Putting the names out there seemed beneficial to understand residents' awareness of open spaces in general. In addition to awareness, another question of interest was when and how these open spaces are used. So you'll see there are questions outlining the various recreation, conservation uses on the properties. This will hopefully provide insight on people are getting out to use these open spaces. Lastly, some demographic questions are added to gain some additional background on residents in Patton Township. Hopefully, this could provide some insights on what age groups are participating in certain activities.
As I mentioned previously, at the conclusion of this project, we will present our findings and analysis of these questions to the Patton Township Board. In our presentation, we will include data from the survey, graphs and charts, and an overview of what these findings may mean for resident participation in these open spaces. Additionally, our team is working to research how other townships within Pennsylvania has increased open space participation to provide the board with additional data on how the township can be successful in engaging residents within these spaces. Overall, we are confident that the board will be able to use our analysis to determine if and how to increase awareness of and participation in Patton Township open spaces. At this time, we're open to answer any questions that you might have about this project. For the survey, I'm happy to scroll up and down as it may be needed.
Any members of the public here, certainly fellow board members, do you have any questions for Jillian, Ben, or Bryson?
I do.
Yes, that must be Elliot, okay.
Just on the, when we talk about the Haw tract, people know that as Circleville Park, which is one part of that.
You're talking about the confusion of nomenclature?
Yeah.
And I think they're aware of that. They've been out to just survey the Haw tract. They recognize its proximity to Circleville, but just emphasize that. That's a good point.
Additionally, we are, I scrolled over these a little quickly, but we are outlining in our survey, we're providing maps of all of these spaces within the cover letter to provide some context on location of property boundaries and names to try to prevent any confusion.
Good point. Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Okay, great, thanks. Pam, can't remember who had the hand up first.
I have a question. After they finish with Patton Township, would it be possible that they can do a presentation at the Transportation and Land Committee for COSS? I think it would be very helpful.
Wow. That sounds like quite an invitation. I think it's up to them, but we can certainly get the students, the schedule of the Transportation and Land Use Committee, and see if their schedule permits them to do that. We haven't even nailed down a time when they'll present it to us, but so I would say we take priority, but we'll share them with T.
I'm saying afterward, way afterward.
Sure, that's great. It may be sometime in January, depending on.
Anita had a question.
Anita, yes.
Yes. I think this is a wonderful project, and I commend the students for their preparation and their presentation. I follow up on Supervisor Abrams' nomenclature suggestion. I think for many people, the Haw family tract, if there could be parenthesis, Circleville Park, the Haw Community Gardens, some people think of the gardens as the Haw Community Gardens, not so much the Haw Family Preserve, and Patton Woods, to identify the words, the names that more people think of in identifying this, that would be a suggestion.
And they might not recognize the boundary between Patton Woods and the Haw family tract, or that they're two separate things. That's a really good point. Any other comments? Certainly, if you have any comments going through this semester, you can ask through me. I'll get the questions to Jillian and Ben and Bryson. I, for one, am delighted, excited. I can't wait to see the results of the survey and see their recommendations. They've really been great to work with, continue to be.
Another idea.
Yes, Elliot.
The Pennsylvania Association of Geographers, which is geography departments, studies like this, that are often, these studies are often published in their journal, and they try to involve students and faculty across the state at the state colleges, and also Penn State's branch campuses, and they're very active for this. I think they'd be interested in hearing about this.
Wow. Your reputation is growing even before you presented this report. So again, Elliot, if you could get that information to me, I can forward that to Jillian and Ben and Bryson.
What I'll do is I'll send the information to you, and then you can forward it. How about that idea?
I like that idea, Elliot, yeah. I'm so glad you suggested it. So any other comments? That's a delightful way to start the evening. Thank you very much. We really look forward to this.
Thank you.
Yeah. Keep me in the loop. I know you will.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Okay, awesome, guys. And you're welcome to stick around, but don't feel you have to, you know. Entirely up to you.
Thanks.
We, in the meanwhile, are going to move on to the second item under our presentations of public hearing, and that would be the grant opportunity for Patton Crossing infrastructure construction. Doug, I'm guessing that you can take us off?
I'll start, and I'll ask our partners from Delta Development, Mr. Poole, to come on video if you're there, or if you can. If you know, Patton Crossing is a mixed-use development that was approved last year. They've identified a grant opportunity through the Milledon Motel Transportation Fund with the Commonwealth Financing Authority. They proposed that Township sponsors this program. It would be very similar to the Burnell Road-Fox Hill Intersection Project that we're currently working on. The complete grant amount is $1.7 million. In conversations I had with them prior to bringing this forward, I'd asked them to look at providing an interim bikeway that would provide a route through this project much sooner, along with Page One, than we would with the Page Seven or Eight in the original project. And I think with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Klein. Are you going to present for the partnership, for the partners?
Sure. Thanks, Doug. It's nice to see all of you again. In your information package, Item 3B2 is the information that would be included in the application to DCD. There's a couple of things I would highlight briefly. One of the things that's very attractive about this project, from a CFA standpoint, is the fact that it's a mixed-use project. One of the things that they're focusing on in their current reviews are projects where people can live, work, and play on one site. So we've got a nice mixed-use concept here that will score very well with the department. The other thing, though, that I wanted to highlight are the nature of the improvements at the bottom of Page One. The thing that I would tell you about the improvements is, it not only improves the level of service on Abboton, it improves the safety at that intersection in terms of pedestrian crossing. With the plans, with the bike, it also integrates bicycle movements, it integrates transit movements, and then vehemotronics. Motomodal means do you combine modes of transportation. In this case, we'd be combining four modes. If you would go to Page Three of that brief, you will see that we've itemized the respective use of funds, where you will see the improvements to the intersection, the signage, utility considerations, and the overall project budget. The final thing that I would say to you is, it's been structured in a way that there's no financial risk for the township. There are no match requirements for this particular application. All of the related costs would be covered as part of the cooperation agreement. We worked together to form a cooperation agreement on the Nittany Valley facility, and we would have a similar agreement here. This would actually be the township's third motomodal request. We actually worked together on Valley Vista as well. So it's an opportunity, I think, for us to bring Commonwealth funds to Patton Township. The approval of the application, I think, will give us a better product in terms of how we integrate the modes, but it will also create for us the economic impact associated with the project. So with that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Any members of the public have any questions? I see we have somebody, if you could come up. Is that James?
Yes.
I thought so. I have a hard time. You may come up to the podium. Tell us your name and your address.
My name's James Booth. I live at 300 Fairmont, which is in the burr, but I go past this intersection all the time. I'm in support of the Patton Crossing project and of expanding the mixed-use zoning district to all of the street malls in the region, like the housing, affordable housing talks we'll have later relate to. But I think this funding will do the opposite of approving the Abboton intersection for two reasons. First, congestion. The project describes multiple times that the improvements will decrease congestion, but hundreds or thousands of studies have shown that won't happen. In a congested road system, adding more lanes will only encourage more people to drive longer distances until congestion is back to current levels. The Katy Freeway in Houston has a total of something like 20 lanes from multiple widening projects. So if adding lanes reduced congestion anywhere, it would do it there. And yet, the road is still just as congested as it's always been. So congestion will stay about the same. But second, these changes will also make other users less safe and less willing to walk, bike, or take transit in the area. Widening Abboton and building a six-lane access to Patton Crossing will create an intersection with three six-lane road segments. Right now, there are only about one or two that I could find, six-lane road segments in the entire center region. This is exemplified by the drawing of Page Two of the project description. It shows crosswalks as two meter white lines, which weave around up to six lanes of traffic on their 100-foot journey across the street. And two intersections, both the intersection at Abboton and the internal intersection with the Aldi parking lot, prohibit pedestrians from crossing on one of four sides, meaning a pedestrian might have to cross over 250 feet of asphalt just across the street. Patton Crossing is supposed to be an urban place, but it will turn into a mall or a lifestyle center if it's surrounded by six-lane access roads, disallowing people from accessing it, being walked, or biking, or transit. The bike path and bus stop pads are reasonable small improvements, but if this is a truly motomodal grant, we should focus on access impacts for all modes, not just traffic impacts. Instead of widening roads, we should be increasing the number of visibility of pedestrian crossings across Abboton and within Patton Crossing, and proposing protected bike lanes or bus lanes along Abboton Street. Thanks.
I'd like to just respond to James's comments, and then have other board members at either exchange or make their own comments. Do you have specific plans that you would offer, you summarized your alternative suggestions to the six lanes?
So I think if we're, I don't have specific plans, but in general, I think if we're looking to expand the road, we're looking at the wrong things. So instead of expanding the road, we should find alternatives to driving, so that people don't have to drive to get to Patton Crossing. And to do that, we should be, instead of having two lines as a crosswalk, we should be looking at zebra crossings, so having a lot of white paint that clearly delineates something as a pedestrian crossing, and making those as wide as possible. The turning radii on the corners of the intersection are something like 20 or 25 feet, and if those were brought in, the pedestrian crossings would be much shorter, and it would slow down right-turning cars, which I find will be another benefit. Eventually, a bus lane or bike lanes, protected bike lanes, so protective bike lanes would have bollards or parallel parking or something between the bikes and the rest of the street. Along Abboton could allow for safer bike movements, or bus lanes, the same kind of thing, could allow for more efficient bus movement, although that would depend on where that was going to run service.
Thank you for that information. Alexandra, a question for you specifically, and then I guess for Doug, about this whole process, the design process, is the six-lane part of the development plan that we already agreed on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I think it'll be, if, original plans has four lanes. I think it'll be, if, um, original plans has four lanes for the Aldi development, and it'll be expanded to six.
For the full development, which they'd like to construct now, so they only are in the intersection once.
Okay.
If construction. If you'd like to talk about the traffic, I think we should bring their traffic engineer in.
Okay.
If you want to have that discussion. I don't think I can do justice on what...they worked with PennDOT back and forth, this is what PennDOT requires for the improvements. I agree with you, all your ideas are good, but in the environment that we are in today, this is what PennDOT requires for this development. I don't know if there's any room, and perhaps we can ask them to go back and look at the crosswalk, the fourth crosswalk, and see if that can be put in and see what impact that has on all the other modes, if we put that in. We can do that. But other than that, I don't think there's a lot of changes you're going to see that we're going to be able to enact, basically because this is all dependent on PennDOT's. It's PennDOT's road, they follow the methodology for projecting new traffic and everything, and ultimately, at the end of the day, this is what PennDOT is requiring them to build.
I think the fourth crosswalk would be a significant improvement, and zebra crossings and stuff like that.
Yeah, I will just say, from our standpoint at Township, for crosswalks that are at signalized intersections that have dedicated pedestrian crossing heads, we use just the two lines because they're already in a protected space. When we have crosswalks at intersections that do not have signals, then we use that, we use what we call the piano keys. I don't know if that's the same as what you're talking about, a two-foot wide block and two-foot non-paved. So in Patton Township, that's what we've done. It saves paint, and they have to be redone every year. So, like I said, at signalized intersections, the pedestrians are in the space where traffic expects them to be, between those two lines, and they have a protected, generally, not always protected, but they have a signal that gives them guidance on when to cross. So it's not like the traffic, it's not like the drivers are approaching the intersection, they have to identify that there's a crosswalk, they're pedestrian, they're already looking at, they either have a green signal or a red signal, so...
And in addition to the fourth crosswalk at Atherton, would it be possible to have a fourth crosswalk in the Aldi entrance?
If the board wants us to look at that, we can go ahead and do that.
Alexandra, would you be the one who would interface with that, that fourth crosswalk that James is talking about?
I'll, I'll.
Okay, great.
I'll take that off with the development team.
Yeah, I want to paint a broader picture for our viewing audience here. James has been involved, or has come to meetings previous that have involved the Patton Township development, the Patton Crossing. And in addition to that, you are studying urban planning, transportation...
And also in the seed program.
And also in the seed program, there you go.
And...
Okay. So, thank you for your input, and may you continue to...
I'd say...
Think outside the box and go forward. Yes, I see some...
Elliot.
Elliot, great, thank you very much.
I understand the problem with the six lanes, although, in a way, the idea that you add more lanes, invite more cars, sounds to me like if you do more testing, you get more COVID responses, but...
Kind of different.
Putting that aside, I think that one argument that's different is that there's an interstate highway just about a mile away from this site, and so anybody who wants to go at full speeds and things like that doesn't need to even get off the road to go to this site. I do think we need to make it safer for pedestrians, though, and one idea might be a, an island-type structure that is safe right in the middle, and that might, because if you can't go across the street in one light cycle, what do you do, just get run over? So, if, a place where you could actually stop safely over the street, that might help. Now, I don't see the room for it right here, but we do have a problem. For example, I see people taking their lives in their hands when they try to cross Viro Boulevard, cross Atherton Street at Viro, it's very difficult, and it's going to be difficult for this, too, if we don't provide the right space for walkers.
Doug, if I could, one of the things that I think is important is we are proposing to change the mediums in both of these improvements, and the dedicated pedestrian signal heads control the safety that doesn't exist there now. The other thing, though, that I wanted to identify is this particular proposal includes vehicular detectors for all of those different motions, so that each approach is controlled by that detector. And finally, there's an addition of emergency vehicle preemption detectors. So what you have out there are the addition of a lot of features that, but for this grant, don't get funded in the improvement. The final thing that I wanted to do, I would say right up front, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I think it's important to understand that in the traffic study, what we needed to do was grow the traffic on Atherton with and without the development, so that the improvements that are advanced as part of our project are improvements that anticipate both of those development curves. And so what you have here is, I think, an improvement that not only addresses the conditions today, the future condition tomorrow, but the full development of the project and that condition moving forward for a period of 10 years.
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Yes. Oh, are you saying you have a comment, or you're saying...sorry.
Yeah, that was me, you don't see me.
Oh, I do see you, of both places. My colleague, please.
I don't want to prolong this discussion, but one thought that I had after Elliot's comment is, and this is completely up to PennDOT, obviously, there could be an always-stop to protect pedestrian crossings. So, I presume this intersection would have a push button for pedestrians to signal their intent to cross, and at this particular intersection, because of the, how wide it is, it makes sense to me, anyway, to make it an always-stop for traffic to whatever, 15, 20, 25 seconds, so that only pedestrians are in the intersection during that time. Because right now, someone mentioned the Viro-Road-Atherton Street intersection, I've noticed there are still vehicles making right-hand turns, and you have pedestrians trying to cross, and they have to watch out for right-hand turning traffic because you can turn right on red, so...
You're supposed to yield the right of way to pedestrians.
I understand, but it's still a danger to pedestrians if a driver doesn't yield the right of way, and doesn't notice a pedestrian trying to cross. So, anyway, that's another thought, to stick that in for PennDOT to consider, always-stops for all traffic for pedestrian crossings.
And I'm looking to see if they're additional, yeah, I thought so.
I need to have it.
Supervisor Tease, yes. You're...
You're muted.
You're muted.
There we go. I have a procedure question. I was surprised to see this proposal asking the state to fund those six lanes that are within the property. Is this kind of the way the state does things? I mean, I could see the state wanting to fund their own highway on North Atherton, but to ask them to fund the six lanes that are within the property itself, is this just kind of considered common practice?
Yes, thank you for that question. You will see that there...
I'm sorry? I said you're welcome.
Yeah, so the CFA motomotile projects are designed to facilitate economic development projects, and so what they will fund is they will fund the access road off of a state route to create the entrance to the economic development activity. In this case, the access road for the budget that's been included in the application is just at the intersection, because what we're doing is we're providing a safer movement from the state highway into the development project. So, the short answer to your question is, the program's specifically designed to fund the access, and it frequently funds the access road into a project as part of the development concept.
Okay, thank you. I have a second procedure question, if I may, and that's, I appreciate that you've said that it won't cost the township any money, except for the staff time of our solicitor and our manager, and a few advertising costs. And my question for that, is that also considered common practice, that the developer really does not fund the administrative costs that fall to the township for implementing this proposal?
I guess I didn't communicate very well. In the grant description, the developer will cover the cost for inspections, for your staff, for the solicitor, and for other ancillary costs associated with the grant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair?
I have...
Oh, go ahead, if there's another question.
Yes. Do you have a question?
No, I was going to move...
Oh, I was just going to ask a question.
I, yeah, I have some questions on the bike path.
I was gonna, yeah, go ahead, Anita, I have probably the same questions you have, so why don't you go ahead?
Well, go ahead, if you'd like to ask, then that's fine.
Nope, you go.
Does, will the path in the northwest corner Aldi, is that still on the table? And that's one question. And the path that you will cut through the trees that are between Park Forest Avenue and the property, is that going to be the same location where ultimately there will be a paved road for the, had a bus entrance?
Is Tony there, Doug? Doug, is Tony there?
I don't believe so. Maybe Bob.
Okay, so...
Mr. Poole, do you know is that path location, I believe it's in the same place where the access road will come through, the Township Parkland?
You know, Doug, I don't have it in front of me, Anita, I, I...
I believe so, because it's right across from the alley on the other side of the street.
I think it is, but I just couldn't nail the answer, pause it, I don't have the...
Let's answer it this way, if it isn't, it will be. We'll move it. Yeah, good, good comment, Anita. If it's not where that is, then we'll move it to make sure it's in that location, so we'll...yeah, I'm pretty sure it is, because it lines up with a curb cut for the alley across the road. So, there was another part to your question, Anita, something?
And that was in terms of our planning commission. Is this something that they should see, I mean, we're kind of approving this bike path arrangement, is that something that should have been also the planning commission brought in to let that...
No, they don't need, we don't need their input. If you're okay with this, this just is actually in addition to what was approved. Remember, under the approved plan, we probably wouldn't have a bikeway through here until Phase 7 or 8. So this way, this advances it, so we should have it next year when Aldi's is done, ready to open.
Excellent. And that raises a timing question I had, so is the timing for Aldi's viewed for next year path, and then when do you envision the traffic work happening? Also, early next year, is there a timing estimate here?
Look to the partners.
The Aldi, the Aldi should start, hopefully it'll start in, Anita, it should start in March, about March, probably in the March, and the, and the idea of the opening will be middle of September.
So the roadway construction would probably start, we'd probably try to get that bid out before March, so we get started with the spring construction season.
Yeah, we actually, Doug, we, we've put, we've put bids out already, and have received back some of the bids on the, on the construction of the wall, the wall in the front, and the, and the entrance coming in, and that would also be the path for the Aldis.
Thank you. And then when it comes time for the vote, I have a comment, but I'll yield to those who want to move this on to a vote.
Mr. Abrams has a...
Yeah, Mr. Abrams.
Yeah, I, yeah, Mr. Abrams, yes.
Well, I just, I just think this is a good idea, and the, a year ago, I might not have thought so, but a lot of people are out of work, and a project like this will actually acquire workers at a time when we really need them, and they're not necessarily permanent workers, but this is, this would be a big deal for our area to have this kind of a project coming in that, you know, we hadn't anticipated, but I think it'll help this thing go.
I have a couple of quick questions about the bike path itself. The path is a, an interim path, meaning it will change. I'm assuming the exact location of the path, I don't recall that in the plans, so you're essentially just taking advantage of the asphalt that's already there, based on the existing roads, and then you're adding gravel at the northeast end of it?
Correct, yes.
Am I correct? Okay.
Correct, that's correct.
And I'm assuming the adding of gravel will have minimal impact on the surrounding vegetation, keeping that as green as long as possible? Or will you have to take trees down for that process?
All the trees are gone on the site already.
Well, there's some vegetation at the northeast end.
Uh, what's left is probably off, off their property.
Oh, okay. I drove by today, it seemed like it was, okay, that's fine, just curious. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion at this point, unless there are any more comments.
That moves.
Okay.
Second.
It's moved at second, and we are, actually, we were directed, whoops, motion second, yes. All those in favor, or any other comments before we take...
One quick comment.
Yes.
I do support this because there are, will be major traffic challenges created by the Patton Crossing development, and just for the public record and the information, many residents opposed the rezoning because they foresaw major traffic congestion. And I truly hope the changes you plan, as your write-up says, may reduce the congestion where possible, but right now, even when you leave Park Forest on Park Forest Avenue and turn onto North Atherton, you hold your breath as you cross several lanes to make a left-hand turn onto Woodycrest. I'd just like to go on the record that I believe the public should expect major traffic disruption and congestion on North Atherton as Patton Crossing builds out, and I hope I'm wrong, I hope that this plan will indeed ease congestion and be safe, but for the public record, there were many residents who opposed this proposal because of the concern about the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Tease. Any other comments? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So the motion passes, and the plan is presented, we'll go forward.
Thank you very much.
Okay, this...
Thank you, everyone.
Thank, thank you. And we're going to move on now to the Whitehall Road Regional Park Phase 1 discussion. We had considerable discussion at our previous board meeting here in Patton Township, and also Monday night, last Monday night, at the COG General Forum, on what is to be done with the remaining funding challenges and projects that are still yet, that are planned and still yet need funding for. So...
This may be a very short discussion tonight. We had scheduled this before the General Forum meeting, we found out from General Forum, this project's going to continue to be discussed at General Forum. At this point, if there are any additional questions that you have, we do have, can you go to Gallery View? Thank you. We have Eric, we have Eric Norenberg, and Joe Vigilione, and I guess Pam, Pam is busy with another function tonight, otherwise she said she'd be here. If you have questions now, we can, we can present those, or maybe Eric or Joe can... If you have questions now, we can present those, or maybe Eric or Joe can address those. But, think of this as more of a follow-on from Monday night's discussion. And if you don't have any questions, we'll move to the next item.
I see Pam Rahm has a comment. Thanks, Dan.
I think we should just move forward. I think Patton Township, for the supervisors, we were thorough. We saw the presentation, we made our comments, and I think we should just move forward. That was a long meeting, rehashing the issues that we had already discussed. So, I think we just move forward.
Dan.
I agree.
Likewise. I think we stand behind this project 100%, and we're willing to pony up where need be, not on our own. So, I think it remains for the other six municipalities to come to some, or five municipalities, four, to come to some consensus. And it sounds like we will follow suit.
I'll just tell Eric and Joe, what a great job you've done. And Pam, obviously, I'm impressed with the amount of work you put in and your continuing attempts to understand all the municipal officers or elected officials' concerns, and provided tons of information, and continuing to provide information. So, just keep up the work, and hopefully we'll not shortly reach a positive resolution to this, and we'll finally start breaking ground. Because I think all of the supervisors here in Patton Township support this park, and we definitely want to see it happen. And the only question is managing the details.
Yeah. But therein lies the devil. Yes, thank you so much. Any comments?
Well, we appreciate the feedback and the support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move next to another presentation, this time by one of our own. This is a proposed task force on affordable housing. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Supervisor Tease.
Okay. I will be brief. The proposal was outlined in a memo that was attached to the agenda. The ideas have been discussed in our planning commission for months about ways that this township can address the housing need. There are young professionals who work at Penn State who cannot afford to live in our area. There are many others. And, so I think it's an appropriate time for our township to take a leadership role in pulling together all of the information and expertise that is out there to identify ways that the needs of the area and ways that they can be addressed. And I know our planning commission has discussed that to great depth. But this would be an effort that I would propose, have representatives, the planning commissions, would have members of the supervisors, would have professional planners. I've spoken with Nicole Pollock of the Center Region Planning, with Morgan Wisikonis, I may be mispronouncing her name. She is a Patton Township resident and the executive director of Housing Transitions. Rachel Fawcett, who is the Publications Coordinator, working at Penn State for the Pennsylvania Housing Research Center. Stephanie Foss, she's the executive director of the Habitat for Humanity, and a board member of the Builders Association of Central PA. All of these folks are willing to be part of an initiative by the task force to present education programs, to help all of us in conjunction with dialogue with citizens representative of various housing areas and various parts of our township, to come up with a vision for housing in the coming five to 10 years, much like the Recreation Advisory Committee did with their excellent report that they prepared, that we saw about parks. And I think the need for this has really been exemplified by our previous discussion regarding Patton Crossing. Because in that, and how much language and definitions and values and expectations matter and need to be defined. And there were very good reasons, I understand, why Patton Crossing was approved. But, one of the words that even came up in this proposal that they are now giving to the state was looking at this property as, let me get the exact wording here, underutilized property, underutilized property. And I think our words not only reflect our values, but they can determine them, underutilized property. And it was, I think, the great misfortune of the people who lived on what the site of Patton Crossing is, that they lived on property that others deemed to be underutilized. And so, they were evicted, as you know. And the children who rode tricycles on these paths that now will become the bike paths, and they walked to the Methodist Church, to the Park Forest Day Nursery, and they stayed under the trees that were clear-cut. And their lives were really altered, because they lived on land that was deemed underutilized. And I want to hope that in the future, and I know there's very complicated discussion, and economic value is very important, it's part of the mix, but I hope in the future that others will not feel that their lives were undervalued by our community, who wants them to work here, but not live here. So, how can we work as a community to develop new ways of meeting what is a community and center-wide problem? Nicole Pollock, on her, I don't know if she's on tonight Zoom, but in her efforts last week in a Zoom conference, there's good examples from other places in Pennsylvania, Phoenixville, Pennsylvania, which had a housing task force. So, it's my hope that we can pull together communication and collaboration in all the sectors that are needed, private and public, the builders, the lenders, the bankers, the planners, the citizens, and out of this, produce a report for the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors that would propose a vision and options, much as the Recreation Advisory Committee did. So, I would ask for the support of the supervisors, any alterations you would make to this proposal. I would propose that this task force, once it gets going, make interim reports to both the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors. We need to identify a process for identifying and inviting applications to serve on the task force. That could come after the mission statement and purpose is finalized. So, I'm willing to entertain any questions. I've talked, I know with some of you informally, but I welcome your consideration of this.
Well, I, for one, would like to commend Supervisor Tease for taking the leadership role in this. I know she's expressed an interest in affordable housing for some months, and being willing to step forward and help Patton Township assume that leadership role. I believe that the planning commission took the initial steps in putting Patton Township in a leadership role, and with Supervisor Tease and members on the planning committee, whoever intends to be on this task force, will take us further down that road. Thank you very much. Any additional comments from board members?
I agree. Definitely, we should do this, and so, I hope the rest of the board agrees as well, and so we can pass this on to the planning commission.
Yeah. Great. I saw Elliot's hand there, I believe. Elliot.
I move to send this to the planning commission.
Okay. Not that we need a motion, but is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconds it.
Okay.
Pam, did you have a comment, or otherwise?
Now, I'm waiting for the vote.
Okay. Those in favor of approving this proposal and sending it on to the planning commission, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Say nay. On it goes, to the planning commission. We're gonna move now to the administration's section, I believe. Yes, and we're gonna start with the capital improvement plan. We had charged our most esteemed financial director last meeting to see if he could go back and look at our capital improvement plan, reduce some of the projects, expenses, put them off, so that we would not have to propose a tax increase. This is a difficult time, as Supervisor Abrams noted, a difficult time to propose any kind of a tax increase. So, we have that from Larry Pedro.
So, as we talked last week, this report helps us to plan major projects and how we're gonna pay for those projects. And going through the report, based on your tasking me to do it without a tax increase, I would be working with Doug and working with Steve and Alex and Public Works, we were able to make some changes which are identified in the, if we could just wait right there. Were identified in the agenda. In the ongoing projects, we were able to move the bikeway right-of-way acquisitions out one year. The township bikeway route system, we were able to move it from 2021 to 2023. The Circleville Bike Path Connector, we moved everything out one year. The traffic signal replacements, we zeroed out the 2021 and 2022 contributions. The MS4 Stormwater Project, we zeroed out the 2021 and 2022 contributions. The solar panel project, we moved from 2021 to 2023. And the fire station retaining wall, we moved from 2021 to 2025. So, those were all projects that were ongoing projects. Now, if we go on to the new projects, with the Abington and Quine Hospital, since 370,000 of that is through a grant funding, we didn't need to move that. We kept the external consultant for the police department in 2021, also the auto license plate recognition system in the police department.
Yeah, those had originally been scheduled for 2020.
2020, we moved to the 2021. That's correct. The administrative sergeant is the same, it was in 2020, we moved it to 2021. The additional police officer, again, was in 2020, we moved it to 2021, as, the same with the part-time police secretary. The firearms replacement wasn't scheduled until 2024, and we didn't make any changes for that. The revision of the planned airport district zoning regulations for 85,000, we moved it from 2021 to 2022. The replacement of the 2008 Toyota Prius, we moved from 2021 to 2023. The Fox Hollow Tachet signal repair, we've gotten the money from the insurance company for part of that, so we've kept that in 2021. The Viro Boulevard updates, we moved to 2025 from 2022. And the Upper Joliet Pike and Rose Drive culverts, we got that money through FEMA in 2017, so we have that money to do that in 2021. One area that Dan brought to my attention, on page 6 of the report, this is the way that that table should read, though the no increase and the 1% increase in 2025 is correct on that table, and the actual numbers, I forgot to make the change, though, they should all read 8.9 mils plus 0.6 mils for open space from 2019 through 2024. In 2025, we have a 0.1 or 1/10th of a mil increase going to 9 mils plus 6 tenths of a mil for open space. That leaves us with projected cash balances for 2021 of 15.4%. 2022, it goes down to 6.5, which is below our 8 to 12 target, but it comes back up in 2023 to 11.9%. In 2024 and 2025, the 7.5 and 6.6 respectively are below our target, but we certainly have time that we'll get more information to see if we can do anything with that between now and when we do that CIP. So, is there any questions or comments I could take?
Well, I certainly want to commend you and Alex and Steve, and Doug, for your fine-tuning this. I'm assuming that there is no compromise to safety. There may be some compromise to cosmetic values, but the important element is safety.
That's correct.
Any comments or questions from the board?
I'll just say, I like this a lot better. We don't have to ask our taxpayers for a tax increase at the moment, because of the economic problems we're experiencing, which will certainly be prolonged into 2021. So, I don't see any need to make any further changes in the CIP.
I agree. I would like to suggest perhaps some way of calling out the hard decisions that have been made here, that citizens who perhaps are used to seeing repairs done on perhaps a more rapid schedule may not be seeing that in the next couple of years, but that we have done this with the financial security of our township members in mind.
Okay, so, would you like me to mention that someplace in the report?
To mention that someplace in the report?
Okay.
Right. And wherever it's posted on the website, mention that again, maybe in the preface of the report. All right. This is nothing to be, to make amends or excuses about, this is something to be very upfront and proud of, I think. So, I commend you for bringing it up, Dan Elliott for bringing it up last time, and again, the staff for working to get the details to make it come out with less hardship for citizens.
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you.
And then, we can probably issue that, Doug, when we're ready to approve it?
Yeah, it'll come back in December.
Yeah. We don't need to present the report again, is what I'm saying.
No, no.
In December, when we do the adoption.
Yeah.
Okay.
Working furiously over the next 10 days to finish the report.
Yes, I will be working furiously over the next 10 days.
Any other discussion on this? If not, we can move on to the next item, which is authority boards and commissions. We are first looking at an overview of reappointments and vacancies in the upcoming year, and then we're gonna be reviewing the policy on reappointments. So, I will let Doug set this up for us.
Yeah, I just want to give you a preview, since we have a couple new members on the board this year, of how this process goes through. And this happens every year. We have, as you know, ABCs, our authorities, boards and commissions are fairly active. They help us bring services to the residents, businesses, and property owners. Generally, you will see in November and December, you will see reappointments pop up on the agendas. Those are generally people who have not been term limited. They're up for, their first or second term is up, and they're eligible for at least one more term. Those are listed down towards the bottom of page 8 on the agenda. I think there's nine of those this year. I think there's nine of those this year, covering a variety of boards and authorities. For the other ones, again, I think we'll talk, we can talk more about that with the next item, too, but just to let you know that there are, under our current term limit policy, there are three vacancies that would come up in January of 2021. If we were going to refill those with new folks, we would take a look at our applicants that we have received over this year. We ask if anybody's out there interested in volunteering and helping out, please go to our website, get an application, and fill that out and send it to me, and you'll be in the running for one of the positions that will be open. The three positions we have currently right now, our planning commission, recreation advisory committee, and a zoning hearing board alternate seat. And I think with that, there's no action needed on this item.
So noted. Thank you. Want to also set up the discussion on the policy?
Sure, I'll give you the introduction here.
That chair.
Oh, did somebody have a comment?
I have a question.
Yes.
I've become very fond of the application form that was created in 2008, and I'm wondering if there are, I know that we don't have a communications person on board yet or these things, but is there any way of perhaps updating that communication form, the application form, that people might be able to fill it out online or do some other things for those who might be applying new for some of these positions?
Good idea. I could look into that.
Maybe not in the next two weeks, I think I heard him say.
Yeah, we've got, I think, four or five applicants for this year.
Good.
I'll take a look at it, put it on my list of things to do.
Thank you.
You want to set up the?
Sure.
The policy review?
In 2007, the board supervisors adopted a policy and formalized it. I'm not sure what form it was in prior to this, and I didn't go back to research it either, but they did set up term limits for authorities boards and commissions based on how long terms are. Basically, if you serve nine or 10, or eight or nine or 10 years, typically you're on an ABC, you're going to end up being term limited. So as you can see, under 0.1, ABCs with four, five, or six-year terms, people can serve two full terms. Some people may also serve a partial term at the beginning of their tenure. ABCs with three-year terms, serve three years, I can't remember which one of those are.
It doesn't matter.
Have that list with me, right? I don't have it with me right now. And then ABCs with annual appointment, there's a few of those. We'll let those folks generally will serve 10 years, up to 10 years. With that, I've been talking with the different staff liaisons, especially with the boards that we have people term limited off. The RAC, our recreation advisory committee, met last week, had a discussion, that was a regular meeting last week, had a discussion, and then sent a letter to the board of supervisors noting they have several term limits coming up here in the next few years. One occurring this year involving their chair, Mr. Greg Turner, and they asked if the board would reconsider that policy. Their specific ask was to abolish the term limits for the recreation advisory committee. And with that, I'll turn it back to the board.
Okay. Does anybody have any? Yes?
I have a question. Doug, how many members are on the recreation advisory committee?
Five.
Yes.
Doug shared that list with me.
You have that list, don't you?
I do, somewhere.
So Mr. Turner's letter says that four of the five will be impacted because they will serve their nine-year term, full terms.
But not immediately?
No, I understand. One would end at the end of this year, one at the end of next year, and two at the end of the following year. So it's four out of five. So the argument of loss of, what do you call it, organizational memory of having so many long-term serving members, I understand, I understand, and clearly they wish to remain serving this capacity because they have a passion for this. On the other hand, the reason for term limits is to allow other citizens an opportunity to also serve who may also have a similar passion for the work of this committee. So if we extended the term for limits so that these four people can continue to serve, that denies new blood for, new blood for, you know, new people to bring their input and passion and the opportunity to serve their community. So bottom line for me personally, I think we should enforce the term limits.
Any other comments from board members before I say mine? Yes, Anita?
Is there a way to add one or two new members to the recreation advisory committee? Is there a reason why the committee couldn't be seven members instead of five, especially with Zoom meetings?
Yeah.
There's sure room on the screen for a couple extra faces.
I think that's a good question. I would like to defer discussion of that question until we settle the question of term limiting. I thought the same thing.
Elliot knows the same.
Yes, Elliot, thank you, Dan.
I think that would be a good idea. I mean, some people might say it's committee backed, but I think that in this case, we have the best of two worlds. People that have contributed greatly and would like to continue may be able to, and people who haven't yet had the opportunity to continue would then be able to.
Any other comments? I have some comments. I have thought long and hard about this. Someone who, like many of us in this room and serving on committees, have had quite a bit of experience volunteering and working in the community. I know that the stated purpose of the term limits, or the stated purpose, I should say, of the authorities boards and commissions are to serve the community and then to assist the board and the staff, bringing services to the community. I think one part of a service to any community is inclusivity, is making its members feel as a part of the community. One way to do that is to make the positions on the ABCs open and available to people who are interested in serving. Once serving or having served, those individuals are much more active in the community and much more of a sense of the community. I would also like to mention that part of the service, I think that one person, any person brings to any committee that she or he serves on, is to be constantly looking out for one's replacement. That assures the continuity of the committee. It assures the quality, and it assures that the work that you have done will continue after your service on that committee. And as has been said before, allowing new people in brings new perspective, which only adds to the sense of committee and community and makes things better. We, as a township, it says that we continually seek out volunteers, and we certainly do. We've gotten four or five this year. I know that I actively cast about for people who I think would make great contributions to various aspects of this community, and many of you already know that I'm pretty good about asking people to step up and volunteer, or do they want the opportunity to volunteer? I would also like to point out that there's absolutely no reason that a person who has retired from a committee, a board, or an authority, cannot continue to participate in that committee. In fact, I look at my own experience on the open space stewardship committee, which I am now no longer a member of because, or cannot be a member of because I sit on the board of supervisors. However, I have continued to sit on that committee, albeit as a liaison from the board, but I actively contribute to that, and in fact, I lead, I led a volunteer weed cleanup or weed removal project a couple of years ago. I would, if need be, I would, I was thinking about this resolution, and by the way, I should have prefaced everything by saying, kudos to the RAC committee. I think it is one of the most consistently, the planning commission also, but the RAC committee is consistently tasked with objectives and projects, and they consistently produce top-notch work. There is a brain trust in that committee and a sense of leadership and a sense of inclusiveness that I think is remarkable. I've seen a lot of committees that I really do love to step into that committee and eavesdrop or participate as I am so moved. Let's see, but speaking of becoming an active member, oh, I'm sorry, I did get sidetracked here. In the policy statement, or in the resolution on the policy statement, we don't need to change that, but I think it can be noted that the authority board and committee meetings are open to the public at all times, and that the board of supervisors advises and encourages that all ABCs be conducted in an inclusionary manner, which I think in fact they are at this point, promoting participation by both appointed members and any citizen volunteers. I think that's the bulk of my thought on that. So the one hand recommending and giving kudos to every person sitting now in the RAC, but also recognizing that in the greater scheme of things, I think it is important to adhere to the term limits. They seem very reasonable. And then invite the brain trust to continue to have input into the committee.
I want to follow up a comment.
Yes. Oh, sorry, you, okay. Oh, I see.
I think a person who has to step down after they've served the term limits, there's nothing in the resolution that prevents them from reapplying, you know, after, let's say, a year, no longer being on the committee, they could reapply.
Yeah, we have people on the RAC's done that already. Yeah, typically, we say a year off, and then.
Yeah, okay. And I'd also like to point out that when the ABC committee, that, or another term for that would be members on the board who serve as the fielding team, looking at new applicants, they're looking for qualified applicants. And by that, it means people who have an area of expertise through their work or past experience or even passion that they're going to bring to that committee. So to reassure anybody stepping off of a committee to know that the choosing process will do its best to find somebody who can fill those shoes and fill them well.
We also, people who are going off committees, we've also encouraged them, if they'd like to be involved in some other aspect of the township, that, you know, they have a good knowledge of part of the township, and they can transfer that over into another venue.
Oh, one other point, I would like to also put in a plug, that serving on one of the ABCs is actually very good preparation for anybody who chooses to run for supervisor. Thank you. Not that we're looking for anybody this year, but next year.
Ms. Robb.
I just have a question. Our supervisor team made an outstanding suggestion. I didn't hear the answer to that, are we still making a decision without her suggestion?
No, we are not making a decision without her suggestion. We are making a decision on one item, one aspect, which is the term limits, and I guess I should have asked for some conclusion to that. Should we take a show-by-hand motion or by voice, those people who agreed to keep the term limits as spelled out in resolution number?
Anita has her.
2007?
No, I will, after hearing the discussion, you know, I was suggesting it be added instead of.
Right, but let's finish this first.
But I will, I will, the comments that have been made convince me that I will support the keeping of term limits without adding people to the committee. The question of adding people to the committee is a whole separate question.
Right. So let's bring that up. I think it's worth bringing up. But let's just have a conclusion on this. Is everyone in agreement to stick with the resolution as written? Yes.
Elliot.
Elliot, yes. Elliot.
I would agree to keeping the concept of term limits, if we also added in the possibility that we can optionally add a member to if we saw the need, or wanted to have somebody who has particular experience, and we didn't want them to have to.
Wait, I'm sorry, I missed the last part of your statement. Say that again, please.
Basically, that we should have the option, I think, of adding people to the committee as we see that we have the basic structure the way it is.
I agree. I see them as two separate things. I would actually like to have an agreement on the term limits, and then let's talk about increasing committees' size.
I move that the term limits, or I second Dan's motion to keep, was the one who moved that we keep term limits as is.
Okay, everybody okay with that? I do want to get on to Anita's question, and Elliot, I want you to speak on that, so. But are we in agreement that we can stay with the term limits as expressed? Does it favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Does oppose?
No.
Okay. So Anita, bring up your point again, if you would.
Oh, I, well, I would support Elliot's thought that as the committee looks at applications, perhaps some year, there might be two people that were judged to be really superb to add to whatever committee it is, and to grant the ABC selection committee the flexibility of adding, because we're looking again at volunteers, and if people are willing to volunteer and give their time and energy within, I understand you, to what committee to be a manageable size, but all of these seem like very manageable sizes.
And Elliot, was that your proposal, to have that flexibility?
I think Anita is exactly right in that, to add some flexibility.
Okay.
Okay, you probably want to, it sounds good.
Yeah, it sounds a little sticky. I would suggest.
At some point, you're going to have to put an upper limit on these.
Yes. I actually think it's.
I mean, some things like planning commission, there's a formal process you have to go through to change the size. Other ones, probably, there are more, we have local prerogative to do that, but I think to make it a formal thing, you probably want to put, I mean, you don't want to just keep adding one person to the recreation advisory committee every year because somebody new wants to be on it. At some point, you're going to have to set an upper limit up for these things. So I would suggest, you know, I can look at doing something, putting together something that would potentially be another resolution that the board would adopt with the policy. I would suggest we do that instead of just leaving it open-ended.
And I would suggest that we can think about putting seven people on the rack, but I think we should first talk to Susan Wheeler, who heads that up, because after all, the committee is there to help the staff person. That said, having five people on the rack does not preclude having two volunteers, two very active volunteers sitting in on that rack. So should we discharge Doug to take a look at this resolution?
Yeah, work on bringing it back as an agenda item at a future meeting with some suggestions and as well as some input from other staff members. I think Leroy, or not Leroy, Larry.
Okay, all right.
One other thought is that on the new procedure, we could. One other thought is that if we had it on a new procedure, we could sunset it. So it would be X number of years so that if we didn't like it in a couple of years, we could get rid of what we did a couple of years earlier.
I didn't quite get it, but maybe when Doug.
I'll send out an email tomorrow if people have suggestions and ideas. If you send those back to me, I'll try to incorporate them into a proposed policy. And then Larry had got a comment from, on our call-in line.
So we had a call-in from Jim Payne. And his recommendation was for the RAC committee especially, that if you were to add one or two people now to the committee, then they would learn the experience from the four people that are leaving in the next three years. So rather than waiting to do it now and then leave them off.
Good point. Yep. And this may be a particular point for the RAC committee. And I think we need to address that, but I think at the same time, Doug is right. We need to also be looking at what precedence we're setting for the entire fleet of volunteers on the ABCs and have some predictability and some consistency. Great, that's a great comment. Thanks for that. So I think we can move on to the meeting scheduled for November. And I would like to come out of the gate making a proposal that since it looks like the, there are a few items planned for the November 4th meeting could be taken up on the November 11th or 18th, I would like to suggest that we take advantage of that and not meet on Wednesday, November 4th, which is the day after what's going to be a very consequential day for every single person in this nation. And I, for one, am going to be tired. So it's both personal and logical or suggestive, whatever. Anyone have any objections to canceling November 4th? The currently scheduled November 4th, Board of Supervisors?
The Chair's idea.
What was that?
I support the Chair's idea.
Okay, thanks. Any objection? I don't think we need to take them. Okay, great.
Objection to canceling the November 4th meeting, Dan?
I'm sorry?
Any objection to canceling the November 4th meeting?
No.
Okay, that means we'll have a little bit of a heavier lift on November 11th and 18th, but I think we can manage that. For the consent agenda, I'm just going to list quickly the items that are on it. The public safety, which had no items, public works, where we accepted, or to accept the deed of dedication of the Kamis Drive, which is the Grayswoods Phase 6B. The third item, planning and zoning, there are no items. And fourth, administration, the minutes of the October 14th meeting and the resolution to submit grant application. All those in favor? Could somebody please move?
Aye.
And set.
Aye, thank you.
All right. So we'll move on to the management report, and I'll calmly call.
A few items to go over on my correspondence list from the last couple of weeks. But first, if you have not heard, emergency management for Center Region has reset the date for Trick or Treat to November 1st, which is Sunday. We're expecting rainfall from Hurricane Zeta. The forecast overspread Center Region beginning Thursday afternoon and continuing into evening. National Weather Service forecasting one to three inches of locally heavy rain. So with that, we have moved Trick or Treat to November 1st, Sunday. Hopefully, people have seen that one way or another.
From 6 to 8.
Pardon?
From 6 to 8.
From 6 to 8, same time, different day.
That would be very dull to happen then.
Pardon?
I agree with that, and do we need a motion?
No, he's announcing.
No, the Council of Government's already assigned that duty to the Emergency Management Coordinator last month. So he consulted with the police teams, and they jointly made that decision. Press releases went out today around noon. Other correspondence, just included, there's, we get a yearly request from Penn State Weather, Penn State University Weather Service. We have for 20-plus years supported the campus weather service broadcast on CNET. I told them we will continue to do that, and it will be included in the budget for 2021. Just, I think I made a couple of mentions in the past about property tax appeals. There are several scheduled over the next couple of days. We don't need to get involved at this point, but we'll work closely with the assessor's office. If any of these move to Commonwealth Court, we'll get involved with them at that point. Third item is that there, starting yesterday, there are, again, free drive-through COVID testing out at the mall. That's being funded by the county through their cares dollars. If you have any questions, I think the information should be on the county website. But again, it's drive-up. You don't have to get out of your car. It's a very simple one. Just two or three years ago, I tested negative. So we also had a notice from Penn State. They are doing departure planning for all their students. Students and faculty all may, or all may get tested before they leave. Their university is counseling all students to get tested before they leave so they know their status when they go home. And if they need to, they can quarantine once they get home. The university is also making plans for students who need to stay on campus or need to stay in the area, they don't have anywhere else to go, or students who test positive and need to stay in quarantine here. They will be, they will be provided accommodations by the university. The last thing, I had some, there was a notice that came through from a school district that they are providing free turkey and other food supplies for, for anybody in the Center County who wants it, basically. There's a registration site provided with the attachments that went out Tuesday. And I think the distribution is November 18th. That's the end of the correspondence. The zoning hearing board, they heard a case today, front setback for one of the older homes along Buffalo Run Road. Variety of circumstances, there used to be a porch on the front of the building and got taken off many years ago. Somebody wants to put it back on. Zoning hearing board thought it was a reasonable request, and will finish up their work on that to make that variance happen in the next couple of weeks. Upcoming events, there's a list of township closings, item Trick or Treat is now November 1st, and household hazardous waste is November 2021. Pre-registration is required, and do that through the Center County Recycle website. End of my report.
And that starts our committee reports. Thank you once again to members who submitted written reports, as suggested by Elliot. I apologize that I was remiss in getting mine in on time. So we have a report enclosed on public safety, written by Pam Robb. The report on the Climate Technical Advisory Group will actually be included in next month's agenda so that it will go on some public record. That's my error for not getting it in on time this time. Executive Committee, Mr. Abrams, do you have anything to report?
No, we scheduled a meeting that we had, we had the meeting.
Great. And Parks Capital, thank you from, to Anita Tease for her excellent report. The Solar Power Purchase Working Group was canceled. We have an enclosed report from the State College Water Bureau Authority. The Cable Consortium did not meet, the Spring Creek Watershed meeting of that.
We'll have a report then.
Next month. And again, other reports are upcoming.
Yep.
So I think the rest is just adjournment and FYI.
I have a question.
Unless we have other business, I'm.
Well, we can, we can go ahead and adjourn. I can talk to you. This has nothing to do with.
I need signature from you about the.
Okay. Meanwhile, can we have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
In a second.
Second.
All righty. Vote ayes.